We're going to call this meeting to order. We're joined by Counselor Maria Perez. Thank you for joining. We're also joined by representatives from the Law Department, Building Department, and Assessors Office, and they are all here to talk about our second agenda item, which is related to an ordinance pertaining to requiring administrative warrants for inspections and certain municipal actions on private property. So the first portion of the meeting is going to be an update from me regarding the Residency Compliance Commission. And normally I would take you all first because you guys have other places to be. But given that the ordinance is Counselor Hurst's proposal, I'm going to see if we give him a little bit more time to come here, and I'll just get started with my residency Compliance Commission update. So Counselor Perez, if you have any questions about the update that I'm about to give, please just interrupt and ask questions. But the purpose of the update is I wanted to give counselors and the public an opportunity to hear from me about the status of the Residency Compliance Commission.
Thank you.
So the residency ordinance in its current form was most recently passed in its entirety back in 1996. There have been several revisions since then. As a result of one of the more recent revisions, the administration appointed a residency compliance commission for the first time since the Ryan administration. I am the city council's appointee to the Residency Compliance Commission and drafted the most recent version of the ordinance. I also previously chaired the Springfield City Council's Residency Committee under a prior council president. So the good news of the update is that we've been meeting monthly. We have spent the overwhelming majority of the first year of our appointment on creating processes and procedures for the commission, which have now been adopted at our last meeting. And we've created a process flow for how complaints will be reviewed and treated, minimum standards that complaints must have, and the process that complaints will go through once they're received. Anybody that would like to take a look at those rules and orders, be happy to provide a copy of them to you. But just at the highest level, we have created a form to allow for complaints to be submitted. The complaints cannot be anonymous, and they must allege a fact to support the accusation relative to lack of compliance with the ordinance. Thereafter, the compliance unit, not the commission, conducts an initial review and assesses whether or not they can dispose of the complaint based on clear and convincing evidence, highest evidentiary standard available. If that evidentiary standard cannot be met, then the preponderance of the evidence will control, and that matter gets referred up to the commission for a full hearing and investigatory process. Springfield Police Department has been engaged and utilized to conduct the investigations, and they now have appropriate processes to do that. And we have heard facts and complaints in executive session about some of the most recent complaints. And with these rules and orders in effect, I expect that 2023 will be the year that we start to more fully conduct the business of the commission and put an end to the temporary complete delegation to the Residency Compliance Unit. And so I expect that that'll start in January. And we've met at City Hall in the License Commission Office and made the meetings available virtually. Can't talk about the specifics of any of the complaints, but there have been complaints that have been raised. There have been enforcement orders that have been issued, and the commission is off to what I think is a really good start after spending the first year trying to get our get our feet underneath us in terms of the process and procedures for the commission. So that's pretty much it. If anybody has any questions about the commission, I'm happy to answer them just as one member. And I, like I said, I expect that 2023 will be a really positive year for starting to implement the intent of the commission and its role in enforcement. So do counselors have any questions about any of that?
So I'm muted. I do, Counselor Fenton. It will be online, and it will be in Spanish as well for the complaint. Do you know?
That's a good question. I can get back to you on that. I know, I know it'll be online for sure. And I know that one of the members of the commission was involved in the drafting of the complaint form for the police commission. So if it's not also in Spanish, we'll make sure that it's offered also in Spanish.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Counselor Hurst? I think you're muted, counselor.
I said I'd just like to say, well done. You know, it's definitely something that was needed. The fact that, you know, you all were able to move forward and take the time to actually come up with the rules and procedures to actually be effective is something that other commissions ought to emulate. And, you know, my hope is that folks will follow yours' lead. And so, you know, I look forward to an exciting 2023. Have there been a lot of complaints submitted?
Uh, you know, I don't know what a lot is, but we've been briefed on more than a half dozen.
A half dozen, got it. Okay, well, I'd love to see the rules and procedures that you guys created and, you know, just get an idea as to how it is that you guys are airing these particular cases. And, you know, I think it's something that ought to be helpful throughout the entire city. So appreciate your leadership.
Yeah, I'll send them over to you and
How long did it take to develop them?
About the whole year. I mean, our first meeting, our first meeting was in January or February, and we met, we met every month. I think we missed one month. And, and to be quite honest with you, we really haven't talked about much else other than these, other than these procedures from the outset. I mean, we've been getting briefed on cases. So the way we've been doing it is the compliance unit has been handling the enforcement until we could get these procedures in place. But, you know, we've, I've spent a lot of man-hours on them, and the, and the commission has spent a lot of time listening to me and Attorney Days and Attorney G about implementing them. So they're, they're ready now, and and the complaint form is either ready or will be ready by, by January 1st. And yeah, so, so like I said, there's, there's going to be standards, and there are standards, not going to be. There are now standards for the complaints. They get initially vetted by the unit, which is Bill and his team. And then there's reporting up to us. And if they can't meet the clear and convincing evidentiary standard, then, which is a really hard standard to meet, then we do a full investigation and conduct a hearing.
So you all don't get to see all of the, you all won't be able to see all of the complaints that are submitted? You all won't be hearing all of the complaints that are submitted? How about that?
We will be, we will acknowledge of all the complaints that are submitted. We will not necessarily hear all the complaints that are submitted. So, so for example, if, if, you know, Jane Doe submits an anonymous complaint and says Mike Fenton does not live in Springfield and provides no other facts and doesn't identify herself as a natural human person, then the unit would be able to dispose of that complaint without having to, to waste our time. You know, similarly, if, if, if Jane Doe is a real person and provides evidence that she's a real person and says, you know, the, the fact that I allege that supports the accusation that Mike Fenton doesn't live in Springfield is that he told me so at the Big Y, that's a sufficient complaint. And Bill's team and the unit would conduct a preliminary investigation. If upon conducting that investigation, Mike Fenton can demonstrate that he really does live here. I've got a deed, and I don't own any other real estate, and I vote here, and here's my insurance records. And it's clear and convincing evidence that Jane Doe was not right. And, you know, Mike was not being truthful when he said that at Big Y, or he had Mike Fenton confused with another Mike Fenton. Then based on that clear and convincing evidence, the commission doesn't need to hear it. But as soon as there's a question of fact, or, you know, maybe Mike has two residences, and so that requires an additional review, or Mike isn't registered to vote here. Or there's something that intervenes that makes it less than clear and convincing evidence, then it goes to the commission for a full hearing and review.
Okay.
That's where we decide. So thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, and like I said, there have been some enforcement decisions, and to my knowledge, for the first time. So very excited about that. Okay, so the next item is this proposal from Counselor Hurst relative to requiring warrants from the court system for certain municipal inspections. And Counselor Hurst, I know there was a there was a revision that was circulated, and you emailed me and asked for this, this meeting to, to update everybody and hopefully pass this out a committee based on those changes. I don't know if you want to take it from me.
So I can sort of give an overview of the background, and then I'll turn it over to Attorney De Souza just to sort of give an overview as to what, what changes were made from her end and what they felt were necessary. And then we can answer any questions if that makes sense, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, so the purpose of this code enforcement inspection ordinance really stemmed from a number of complaints that I had received of individuals who were, worked for the city of Springfield and who are either conducting inspections or conducting assessments on individuals' properties without the permission of the owner. And so this particular ordinance seeks to ensure that anyone who is going on to someone's property, unless there are certain exceptions, must receive an administrative warrant before they can do what it is that they have set out to do. And more importantly, or actually more specifically, it highlights the Department of Code Enforcement as well as the Assessors Department, but it is inclusive of all departments here in the city of Springfield. And before they can enter on to a particular property, they must either receive, get an administrative warrant or receive consent from an individual who is 18 years of age. They can certainly, anything that is in plain view that they want to cite or that they want to assess, they are free to do that. So anyone or any inspector who is looking to cite someone from the sidewalk or from anywhere outside of the property itself can do so. They can certainly cite or assess someone's property from a neighbor's, from a neighbor's property or any other property if they've received consent from those individuals. But until they receive consent from the homeowner, they will not be allowed to certainly enter the property and cite things that they wouldn't have ordinarily seen if they had not received that consent. The other exception is that if there are emergency circumstances and there's a need to protect or preserve life, avoid serious injury, then these particular individuals may enter the property. So if it's a police officer and, you know, they're going to investigate something that is, you know, constitutes an emergency, then they, they can enter the property, and they do not need an administrative warrant. The one thing that I, that, that, you know, the one concern that folks had was how it was that, that these individuals were going to access the property itself to get consent. And so what I believe the Law Department did was add sort of a clause at the end of this ordinance that says that nothing in this ordinance shall prevent the inspectors from accessing exterior doors to request admission to inspect the property. And so, you know, this ordinance also to some degree codifies what folks were already doing. But what it also does is it highlights what folks are allowed to do in city departments here in the city of Springfield as it relates to going on in individuals' property and citing or assessing their property. So, you know, I thought this was important and necessary to be codified. And certainly, we'll welcome any questions, but we're also turning it over to Attorney De Souza, who can go a little bit more in depth than, than maybe I have.
Okay, I, I apologize. I had a family issue come up, so I had to unexpectedly come to Brooklyn, which is where I am, and I sat on my computer with me, so I don't have the, I don't have my city computer with me, so I don't have the ordinance in front of me. But it's a relatively straightforward ordinance. The, as, as Counselor Hurst has already highlighted, I added the, I suggested that they add the last line, just clarifying that, you know, people can, inspectors can access exterior doors to request permission to enter. I, I want to be clear that when I was consulted on this, I, I only had experience with, and I still only have experience with what has been practiced at code enforcement. I don't specifically know what assessors do, but they, at least as far as code enforcement, the inspectors have been educated in the responsibilities under the Fourth Amendment, and they're aware that they can't, for example, go into a fenced backyard area. Or if somebody has a six-foot fence around their property, they can't, you know, jump up and look over it, or, you know, bring a chair or whatever. That it's things that are in plain view. To the, I, in all the years I've been associated with code enforcement, I've never had a complaint that we entered the proper, the house. It gets a little confusing because we're saying property, but, I mean, it's all property, right? The lawn's property, but I've never, I'm not familiar with any complaint that they had unlawfully or without permission entered into the dwelling unit. But perhaps there has been a complaint about that that I'm just not aware of. And the code enforcement, which includes, in this instance, the fire inspectors as well as all of the trade inspectors and the state sanitary code inspectors, they are aware that they can contact the law department and have us get administrative search warrants, and that, and that does happen. It's ordinarily in emergency situations where I, I've had to get them for cases of like severe animal hoarding. Or we had a case where somebody had like chained up the backyard, but they were storing dangerous, not like fuel. They would, they would just put all, they mixed all kinds of fuel, like gasoline and oil and in open barrels in the backyard. And we had to go in with, they, and we couldn't, you know, we, we were not being allowed entry. So we had to get a search warrant from the housing court to go in there as well as we got an order to remove the chemicals forthwith. So I agree with Attorney Hurst that this is essentially codifying what is, at least what I believe to already be the practice. And it also codifies our obligations. We're still the government, and we can't enter into areas without a warrant. So I'll answer any other questions that people might have.
Just, just a quick question, Counsel, Mr. Chair, if that's okay? Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Attorney De Souza, as I look at this, and, you know, I start to think about, you know, one of the concerns that I did have of code enforcement, and that was them walking around the exterior of the property up the driveway and looking behind folks' houses for something to cite. And that, that was a concern that not only I had and something that I've witnessed, but also concerns that I've had from residents. As I look at this last line, and it says, nothing, nothing in this ordinance shall prevent inspectors from accessing exterior doors to request admission to inspect the property. That does not stop inspectors from being able to walk down the driveway to the back of the house because it is an exterior door, which means that you would have, you know, you, you, you would have went on that particular property without the permission of the owner to access an exterior door that was in the back of the property. And it, and that to me seems to be, that would not be my intent. My intent would be to allow them to have access to the porch area, front door, you know, what, what is, what is reasonable. You know, and I also think that you, you know, that if it's not specified, we're putting inspectors in jeopardy as well as they might find themselves in very precarious situations in the back of someone's house, trying to knock on the door to potentially seek entry or consent for them to enter. Seems like they would have already violated folks' rights if they walk on their property all the way to the back of the property. Does that, does that make sense?
So I hadn't, I hadn't thought about this that way. I was imagining a situation where, so like in my house, you can't access my back door unless you enter into, my backyard is fenced, so you can't enter my backyard. But, um, but like I have a couple of neighbors who just do not use their front door. The only way to really get into their house is through their back or their side door. So I don't think if it's not, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, and I would have to think about this or do some research on it. I don't know that if you don't have a fence, I mean, it's clearly not trespassing if it's a door that the public can access. So I, so I think that the case law in Massachusetts is very clear that for inspectional services and other sort of, you know, under our municipal police powers that were not considered trespassers. So the, so I know I'm stuttering, but it's because I'm trying to think it through in real time here. I don't, I guess I don't see that as a Fourth Amendment violation. If there's nothing preventing people from going to the back door. If that answers the question.
It, it does, and it probably will necessitate another meeting on this, just because, you know, I think otherwise it, it sort of defeats the purpose. I mean, it certainly, you know, I don't even think, you know, my issue with the Assessors Office, and certainly the, the issue from constituents, is that the assessor would find himself in the back of one's property, looking to, you know, assess a particular house. And to me, that seems like a violation. And it, and it would also seem like a violation when code enforcement does it also. I just, but I, but maybe I'm wrong. And if, and if I'm wrong, then, you know, I'm not 100% sure that this ordinance is even necessary. If folks are allowed to just walk on, you know, walk through your driveway, the back of your house, and cite whatever is in that particular area. Or, you know, I mean, essentially, they can just go all through your property, right? As long as they're, I mean, on, all through the outside of your property, as long as they're, as long as they go in with the intent that they're going to access the back door. I mean, essentially, I mean, that to me seems, I, I just can't imagine that, that, that that could be acceptable. But, but I, I'd love to hear what the case law says. I mean, I, I just, I, it seems to me at some point in time, you have to get some consent before you, before you go to the back of one's property. But I could be wrong.
I mean, I, I don't, I hadn't thought of this question. So when, when you and I talked about it, I was thinking that, you know, yeah, you can walk up to someone's door. Anybody can walk up to someone's door, right? So, and we're not trespassing because by ordinance, I mean, by state law, we're allowed to enter and request access. So I, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I hadn't thought of it this way. I don't know what the practice is either. Maybe, you know, the assessors or obviously Steve Deslet would have a better sense of what the practice is. But I don't, I'm going to have to look at the Fourth Amendment implications before I give a better answer.
Understood, understood. And, Mr. Chair, maybe we can hear from also from Patrick and then, and then answer any other questions. You know, I certainly want to make sure that before we move this ordinance forward, that that particular question is addressed because the ordinance may be a moot point and may not be able to do what it is that I'd like to, to see it do. You know, I, I find it hard to believe that, you know, we're allowing folks to, you know, to go on folks' properties to that level without getting consent. It just seems, it also seems extremely dangerous to me to allow folks to do that as well. But I'll defer, Mr. Chair.
Hey, did, did you have a question for Patrick, Counselor?
No, I just, Patrick just might, maybe he wants to either comment on the, on the ordinance or maybe speak to the practice that the Assessors Office does and, and, you know, why it may be necessary for us not even to have this ordinance.
Sure. So our practice is to knock on someone's door. If no one is home, we will walk around the property to measure and list the property. That is a statutory requirement that we have. We have to list and measure a house once every 10 years, and that's established through statute and then also through the Department of Revenue. So the Commissioner of Revenue has created standards and guidelines for us to assess everyone at full and fair cash value. Now, if someone who is under the age of 18 is home alone, we will not go in. If there's a no trespassing sign, we will not walk around the property. If the property is fenced, we will also not walk around the property. But if, if no one is home, we, we do walk around. And I actually read the stat, the, the proposed ordinance now to be kind of consistent with the way that we operate now where Um to be kind of consistent with the way that we operate now where. It's, you know, if entry has been denied by the landowner or the business owner. That's when we shall get a warrant. Now, I'll say an administrative warrant is not necessary for the assessors because if we are denied access. Uh we have to estimate to our best ability of what is actually there. And if someone challenges that, it then gets appealed to the appellate tax board where they can order. An inspection of the property at that point. So we would, we, I don't even know if an administrative warrant is an option for the Board of Assessors. Uh period, because we have other administrative uh remedies.
Thank you. Um Counselor Govan, your hand was raised.
Yeah, I actually was. I'm thinking about what um Counselor Hurst was saying and I apologize for being late. I was, I had a client. Um so and I'm thinking about the. Um not having a fence because I'm on a main street and I don't have a fence and you can have access to to the house. Um but in this case, we're just, are we just talking about um. Ass- assessing the property or I heard code code enforcement as well?
The proposal would apply not just to assess or the Health Department, all departments.
I see, I see. Now, that was just my my concern, but I think that um um Patrick and and Attorney De Souza answered it. Um I guess they have the right to do that if I don't have a fence. Thank you.
I can't imagine that that, I I just can't bring myself to believe that that is the case. And so uh I will certainly do my due diligence as well. Um I I I, you know, and it it also is a little perplexing to me that if you have a. Um you know, if if a person has a no trespassing sign. That. Will in turn cause for the assessor's office to not go any further. But nothing. Gives you the okay to say you can just go on the property? I mean, I I just. So everybody would have to get a no trespassing sign. Well, and then I guess my and what's, go ahead, uh Attorney.
I I was just gonna say, I'm certainly not a constitutional law expert and particularly not on the Fourth Amendment, but it may involve some level of implied assent. To access and if there's a no trespass, then can't argue that that's implied anymore. If you got. You know, a privacy hedge or a fence, then can't argue that's implied, but. You got an open yard and a side door that's off your garage and that lights on and your front light isn't on. And that doesn't look very inviting because you got, you know, um maybe. Items that are in the way impeding access in that space. You you could see a world in which the side door or even the back door. Um could be a more implied public entrance than the front door, but. I don't know, I don't know specifically. What the answer that would be. Counselor Perez, your hand is raised.
Um yes, and I was just thinking the same because I don't have a fence in one of my side of my driveway. But also as a landlord, if I'm entering my own property, I give notice to the tenants. Twenty-four hours before entering the property, which is my property. So it gets confusing. Um to this point, um. Because I feel uncomfortable coming from work and entering in my driveway and having someone, I mean, it's 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 scary. And it's dangerous as well. Um um I have concerns with that. It's still my property, you know what I'm saying? Regardless if it has a fence or not, so. I feel like you intruding into my property, um regardless, so I think that, yes, we need to revise. That um particular um um statement of entering and inviting. And the other question is if the assessors don't have a particular time that they're gonna assess property. Around the city that they could send notice um. And it happened to me. I saw someone that was taking measurements and all that, uh I mean, as as. Owners what our rights in that's I think that um 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 I'm asking. Thank you so much.
Want to respond to that, please, Patrick?
Sure, so uh we do send notices for cyclical inspections. Um so they go, well, there's not a specific time that we're in the neighborhood, but if we are there for a sale or a permit. Uh and we've sent cyclical inspections, we uh we will walk around that neighborhood. So there is a notice that is sent out. Uh there's not a notice currently sent out for sales, but we are looking into doing that. Uh that as well. And I just want to jump back to Counselor Hurst's point about a no trespassing sign versus a trespassing sign. And yes, I recognize that it is a an awkward situation. There is currently a House bill. That's made it through the first reading and it's going for a second reading. I'm assuming that's not gonna happen. Um at this point, but it will give the assessors. Uh they it will not be trespassing so long as we've given adequate notice to the property owner, so that would alleviate. Um even if there's a trespassing sign, at that point, we would still be able to enter the property. Uh for our statutorily obligated uh assessment process.
Thank, thank you. Uh Counselor Allen and then Counselor G- uh Govan.
Uh thanks, Mister Chair. Uh yeah, if I could address this to Counselor Hurst. And then also to uh Steve Desselitz. Uh Justin, are you, have you heard of problems in this? Is this something you just think is a potential risk area or? Have you, have you? Experience?
Well, all of it. Uh I've I've certainly heard concerns about. Uh code enforcement going into the back of folks' properties uh without their consent. And citing people for for things that have gone on on the outside. Uh and and in the back of their properties. And so a number of residents that I that I've spoken to have felt violated. Uh as as would I if somebody in uniform walked onto my property. And felt as though they they could do it without my consent. Uh and then I've also witnessed the assessor's office. From the back. Through the driveway to the back of my, coming from the back of one of my properties that I own. And it it. It it's a, it it seems problematic. Uh maybe, maybe it is allowed. Uh but it seems as though we ought to be able to put some things in place to stop it. From happening uh or at least force folks to get consent prior to doing so. To me, that just seems like. Uh you know, like the right way to 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 go. You know, so as not to be intrusive to the residents of Springfield. I mean, I I. On top of that, I I think there are all sorts of safety issues that could occur. And that probably have occurred already with respect to code enforcement and the assessor's office going on to people's properties. And folks not knowing. I mean, if I didn't, you know, in any number of things could happen. To the gentleman that was creeping up the side of my house after already. Going all the way down the driveway and into the, you know, down sort of a side. Alleyway into the back. I mean, I I don't know who you are and. You know, who who knows what could happen? Who knows what's back there? And it ju- it didn't seem safe. It didn't seem safe for our folks. Uh and I I certainly felt violated, uh and you know, who knows what could have happened? Um so, you know, that that's what I'm trying to 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 get around uh and. You know, may maybe this doesn't do it just yet, but you know, and maybe we can't do it. Uh but, you know, let's see, let's see.
Can we have Mister Desselitz just talk about their experience?
Are you there, Steve?
Yeah, I'm here. Okay, uh as far as my experience, as I've been with the city of Springfield now, one on twenty-seven years, and we haven't had any incidents to the best of my knowledge. Now, as far as saying this is a safety issue, again, the only one safety issue I know where an inspector, a female inspector was attacked. She was knocked over. That was where she was actually knocking at the front door. The gentleman got mad because she was requesting access to get to the rear yard because it was a fenced-in yard. She was knocked over and she would. Uh ended up with an injury to her shoulder, a rotacuff injury, so but. That's the only incident I know of. Now, as far as the inspectors accessing the property, we follow a mass general law. We've always have. I've never had any complaints coming from citizenry out there or anything. Other than maybe a landlord that gets gets complaint that, uh you know, we we cited him for violations of the code. Well, you know, either the inspectors can see it from the common area to side area, which in any case. Your DHL driver, your Amazon driver, your mailman. Can walk up to your front door or your side door, and that's the same access that's governed by us with the mass general law as access to the property. Uh in most cases, as people know, code enforcement is probably ninety-something percent driven. Complaint-driven, and that's usually the tenant complaining on the landlord or the neighbor complaining. On a landlord or or, you know, on a joining, a joyson property with a neighbor or somebody on the street. So generally, if we look at most cases, a lot of our cases, stuff is pretty visible from the street. But the inspectors know they have to get out of their car, take a look at what they have to, if it's in the side yard, front yard, visible side yard. In some cases, we've had it where the inspector can't see something from a front yard or side yard. But they have a neighbor that may be complaining. And they'll knock on the neighbor's door and the neighbor will give them access from their second floor window or. From their deck that can see into the backyard where maybe somebody's dumping oil or they got trash, debris, junk cars. Illegal structures or something going on, but other than that, I I I just don't know of. Any case that Counselor Hurst is talking about or this. Safety issue that he's talking about. It's never occurred, and I can tell you out of. My meetings all the time with Western Mass Building Inspector Association and our housing associations, we meet every month. I know of no cases in Massachusetts or nationwide where this is a problem at all.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Anything else, Counselor Allen?
Uh no, that's it for me. Thanks.
Okay, Counselor Govan and then Counselor Hurst.
Thank you so much. Um as as you all were talking and as I was thinking about um the issue, um and I. Don't want to be accused of, um you know. Being a community organizer, but I'm a I'm a community organizer first before I was a city counselor. And when I think about this issue, I think Counselor Hurst, I'm sure, you know, have heard many complaints from constituents. This um to me, it sounds a little bit like um the systemic oppression. You know, um that is rampant in in the country, right? And. In in the city of Springfield, there's a lot of property owners that might not be able to, you know, fence their yards in. So the people who can afford to fence their yards in then have um the privilege of. Not having an inspector come in if they don't want them to. Um. We don't want our our yard fenced unnecessarily, so I might have to get a no trespassing sign, but. Um so people who can afford to get the the the, you know, the yards fenced in, then they they have basically. Um kind of like no rights, it sounds like to me, a little bit. Um but that that's my take on it. And I'm not sure what we can do about it if it's mass general law. Um so maybe we need to talk to some some legislators. At the state level. Um but it just that sounds inequitable, I guess you could say. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst.
Yeah, I was gonna highlight something along those lines. I mean, typically when you have code enforcement, you know, involved. Uh you know, normally, um you have individuals who. Are not in a position uh to. Complain, or certainly don't feel comfortable complaining. And if they complain, you know, the fear is that their complaints fall on deaf ears. And then even more importantly, who are they complaining to? And who do they know to complain to? Uh and even to that point. When code enforcement is accompanied by an officer, which. Happens uh and 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 has happened regularly, most of the time it's in. CDBG areas, areas that are probably some of the most impoverished. The city of Springfield, where folks are used to having their rights violated. So. And and also folks who probably don't know what their rights are. Which is why I want to make sure that they know and that it's clear. Uh and if there's a way to prevent this level of intrusion, uh I'd like to do so. Um and, you know, I I I think there are a lot of complaints. That I I know there are a lot of complaints that I've heard and I I've had it hap- and I've had it happen by the code, the director of code enforcement. Where there were, the only way in which you could have taken these pictures that I received. An individual going all the way to the back of the house. And and for me, that's wrong. Uh and especially after asking the neighbor whether they gave them permission to go onto their property and they didn't. So I I I I've seen it happen and it's happened to me and I've heard complaints of it happen. And so. Uh you know, um so I just, I think something needs to happen. Um you know, certainly, we want to make sure that we're not violating. Mass general law and we also want to make sure that we're. You know, that that we as a city are not violating fourth folks' Fourth Amendment rights. Uh so maybe, Mister President, uh we we can have an additional meeting on this. Where I can get some clarity from Attorney De Souza. Uh and to to Patrick's point, you know, I know uh the state. Um requires you all to do certain things. But I also know that the state doesn't require you all to do certain things in violation of the Fourth Amendment. And so maybe once we get clarity on what the Fourth Amendment is. Uh you know, we can have a a more uh detailed discussion. Uh as to whether we are in violation of it or not. Um and. That's that's all I have, Mister President. Um certainly appreciate the meeting and, you know. Maybe we can get back to you with the with some more clarity.
That would be great. I'm happy to call another meeting on it. I have a couple of questions myself. What did I do with those? One second. Okay. Too many things at once. Okay, um. It looks like, okay, there was just two main points that I wanted to make and and um. One of them is related to accessing someone else's property. Visually. Without their permission. So Lisa spoke earlier about being. There this not allowing, for example, someone to climb up on a ladder and to peer over a neighboring fence. And one thing that I'd like us to flush out further before the next meeting is um whether that's really true. I mean, is it, is it true that if someone has a six-foot-tall fence in their backyard? And someone has a sloped backyard and they can see in the budding property. You know, that there's a junkyard there, for example. Is it permissible for the a butter who's upset by the junkyard to call code enforcement and say, you know. Come and see what I look at every morning when I drink my coffee and take a picture from my view shed here and just, you know. Get on your tiptoes and look over and see that they got a bunch of rubbish back there. I mean, it would seem to me that that's permitted. And if it's not, I would be concerned about about that. And the same type of analysis should be given to questions about. Drones or satellite image. And I'm not talking about code enforcement going out and buying drones tomorrow, but. There is, it's not an expensive technology anymore. Um and Google Satellite Image is a tool that the city uses through its GIS system. And I mentioned during the last committee meeting that I have had on several occasions. Residents complained to me about things like junkyards and um. Part of their evidence that they have for it is, well, just look at the GIS. You can see that. You know, this guy's got eight abandoned boats in the backyard or something like that. And is that permissible? For the city to use that evidence, a satellite image, which I don't know if we license it from Google or what. Um in order to to cite someone. Um, in order to to cite someone or or to re- or to, um, or to request some level of remediation. And it's not clear to me based on this discussion whether those things would be allowed. But it would seem that those are tools to me, those are tools that I would want my code enforcement department to have, to be able to utilize the GIS system and utilize view sheds from other private property owners who grant access. Um,
So, um, did you want me to expand?
If, yeah, if you can, that'd be great.
Well, so I didn't mean to suggest that, um, if you can see it from someone else's property and somebody else's prop- and somebody else asked you to come on, then no, that is permissible. That's in plain view. Um, so, and it's legal plain view as long as you have access, as long as you're legally at whatever the vantage point is that allows you to see in. Um, the issue of, and I am not a Fourth Amendment scholar, and I I'm hoping I don't have to become one, but, um, I also think I'm far too old for this job because drone stuff was clearly not an issue when I was in law school, but, um, the issue about the invasiveness of technology and where it intersects with the plain view doctrine is actually being litigated right now. So um, there's interesting issues that the the First Circuit just said that, you know, it's it's okay for the police to have a stationary um, camera in a public area that looks into a private area for an extended period of time, although the trial court level at the district court in Boston had said no, that is not plain view anymore because of the pervasiveness of the ability to view for that extended period of time. The First Circuit um, hasn't got along with that. So, um, what seems like it should be an easy question, right? What is plain view has become more complicated as our technology has become more eh, you know, sophisticated and potentially intrusive. So that's, those are all real questions. Um, I was kind of hoping that I would retire before anybody was bringing drones into this situation, but it sounds like maybe uh, the drones are gonna get here before my retirement date. So we will continue to look at that question because those are valid concerns. Um, and yeah, there's rights on both sides. I I I agree, you know, people often are complaining that, you know, my next-door neighbor has turned their backyard into a a junk pile. Um, but in those cases, usually like, I I I don't think those have become, um, constitutional issues because then you do have legal access to see into it. I think that's different than what I think I heard Counselor Hurst's concern was that we're like that that, um, um, inspectors are just like accessing areas that they have no reason to be in looking for violations. I think that's sort of, I don't want to put words in Counselor Hurst's mouth, but I think that's sort of what I I heard is the concern. So, um, I I will do an opinion, um, I will get a legal opinion on this issue of whether or not accessing side or back doors, um, is a violation of the Fourth Amendment, and to the extent that we're able to talk about other technology, um, will do that. I mean, because I think even with the issue of fences, which, um, I know and and Mr. Dessalit just confirmed it, that, you know, we, the city has always told the inspectors not to do that, that we sh- we shouldn't be invading people's uh, privacy to that extent. But I mean, you know, people have selfie sticks that you could use to see over fences, that sort of thing. So I I think that's what I'm I'm hearing is how does plain view change depending on what legal technology we might be using, so?
And, um, thank you for that. I actually, in that, while you were talking, Lisa, it's so funny you mentioned selfie stick. I want, just in closing, I want to show everybody an email that I sent to Steve just a few months ago before this proposal came up that came from a constituent that had pictures that they took using a selfie stick of someone else's backyard. Just one moment, I think I can figure this out. So, these images here. This would look like you're in the person's backyard. These pictures were not taken from this person's backyard. That's an oil tank, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, and there's a fence in that backyard. So, you know, I, the the point is just that it's a real issue and, um, you know, appreciate the time everybody's spending on it and um, you know, with Counselor Hurst's permission, be happy to schedule another meeting on it after we have a chance to do more research.
Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Just, just to your, your, your ask, kind of asked a question about the GIS and the flyovers and stuff. We had this, that was litigated years and years ago, whether or not the city had that, and I'm, if I remember right, this is probably even pre-Pat Markey at the time, that we had the GIS and we were using those in zoning cases because it's open to the public. This is all public information, these flyovers. So in some cases, we've used them in the past where you could see the original flyover maybe in like, like, two thousand ten. And then there's a flyover done again in two thousand thirteen, and then another one fifteen. And then we use those comparisons to exactly for something like you have right there, where the guy's got junk trucks, cars and everything else in the backyard and you can look and say, well, here's the owner back in two thousand ten, they weren't there. Here it is in two thousand thirteen. We see him. Now, here it is in two thousand twenty, and there's even more of it. And the, you know, zoning, it's sometimes it's all about, oh, it's a legal non-conforming. This was this way. It's been that way for twenty years. It's a legal non-conforming junkyard. Well, no, you can see here in two thousand ten it wasn't. Here it is in two thousand twenty. We've got forty, fifty cars stacked into a back of a private lot to begin with, you know. So, ag- again, my my point is more than ninety percent of our inspections are complaint-driven for that inspector to be there. Somebody sent them a picture like you have, a complaint to three-one-one. I believe three-one-one gets over ninety-something thousand complaints a year that are filtered up to go to between code enforcement, building division, housing, plumbing, electrical. Those are real complaints from citizens that have very serious issues possibly when it comes to access that we need to get in there for plumbing, gas, electrical, or in cases like the one you just showed. Guy's got a two-hundred-seventy-five gallon oil tank that was probably baby spilt out in the backyard.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so it's, it's not like the inspectors are running around, running through people's backyards looking for stuff. It it just, it really just doesn't happen. You know, I, and I've been here twenty-six years, twenty-seven years. I have no any complaints on that at all. Like I said, and and if you want to make the reference of a a safety issue, i- if you put yourself in the inspector's shoes, how many people want to go to the front door or the side door and knock on the door and tell the guy you're gonna be taking pictures of the junk cars and the trash debris on the side of the house? Inspector wants to go there, take his pictures and go. He doesn't want to get into a confrontation with the owner or the tenants of the property because that's where it can get dangerous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any counselors before we adjourn here?
Oh, Seth, I'm on my end. Yeah, I I appreciate you, Mr. Chair. Uh, certainly appreciate Attorney D'Souza and all of the department heads for expressing their their takes on this. Uh, I think at the end of the day, I just want to make sure folks are not having their rights violated, and I'm sure in most instances, it's not intentional. Uh, and, um, if no one has uh, you know, um, you know, no harm has been done to inspectors or assessors uh, as a result of this, it's great, but we certainly want to make sure that that continues. And if there's something we can do through this legislation, then I want to do that.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.